We're ready, Judge.
Okay. Good morning, it's nine o'clock, December twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and our regular Commissioners' Court meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda is roll call by our attorney Kirk, Mary Jane Vidal. Mary Jane, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Judge Resno.
Present.
Commissioner Mendoza, Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Commissioner Solis.
Present.
Commissioner Carson.
Present.
We have a quorum, Judge.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Let me, let me please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am, uh, my report, Communications Commissioners.
Communications, I have something, Nelly's printing it out right now as we speak. There she is.
She's just stepping in. Do you have something for, um, Commissioner Raza to share with? I just, we, we, three, um, had, you know, wanted to just, uh, did some sad update on, uh, one of our employees here at the courthouse, my name, my female, uh, that had, uh, this type of medical issue. So he's in the hospital right now, hopefully recovering. Yeah, yes, and hopefully we can, we can come back, uh, full strength. So I'll just go and share there for some prayers or anything. Okay, Commissioners.
So, so this is, uh, an annual toy drive that, uh, Mr. Lardo Guerra puts out every year in, uh, conjunction with, you know, the Parents' Help and Commissioners' Help and everybody. Uh, they'll be giving away toys, uh, I think it's on Monday, December the twenty-third at three P. M. They start lining up early, like at two thirty, and it's anywhere between three to four hundred gifts that they give away. And, uh, we usually help out. I know me and Commissioner Solis went last year, Mr. Morales will be there this year again. And, uh, we just, uh, buy the hundred, I guess whenever the tournaments are hosted, the requirement is for each kid to bring a toy and then we give out toys.
I mean, that's quite a significant amount of toys, yes.
Mr. Lardo Guerra has been very well with the community, so I always thank Lardo Guerra for always being there for, for the kids.
Oh, ages are ten and under, sorry, ten and under, the ones that are available for this.
Very good. That's, that's something we look forward to, you know, before Christmas, just in time.
Yeah, we usually do it every year and, you know, we get a, a good turnout all the time, yes.
Very well.
I know the kids are out for the holidays already, so I know they're excited, they're sneaking their, they're sneaking in, so.
It's that time of the year, I think we'll be, uh, I guess Monday will be our last workday, is that correct? And then we'll be off Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yes.
Christmas and.
Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday, yes.
Just want to wish everybody happy holidays, you know, spend it with your family, enjoy it, you know, everybody works hard. You know, so enjoy those few days with your family and the ones.
And be safe out there.
I think, uh, I think we're probably already getting the call on Monday, usually is a short, uh, workday also, so I guess we can, uh, make that announcement, uh, while the department shut down right at noon.
Okay.
We can, uh, just make, just make it official, because we're all on board. I think we all get calls that, on, on that day before the holidays.
The calls start at, at seven A. M.
Yeah, it is. For me, it's pretty.
So, that's fine, uh, I think our employees have earned it.
And maybe we'll be out, uh, Monday and Tuesday.
Wednesday, we return Thursday and Friday.
So just bear with us.
For the community.
Whatever Thursday we have.
Community.
Usually those days they put a lot of stuff out on the, on the streets, so we can just hold off till Thursday.
That would be very helpful.
For those employees watching, it's beneficial, uh, Monday will be happy day.
All right.
Commissioner, this morning is God. Good morning, I'm Karen Lynn. I didn't ask for reading the agenda, but I wanna, I'll give you a little, uh, update to what's going on in the end of the total book.
Okay.
Uh, up to right now, December, and I put some little notes right there for you guys.
Oh, yes.
So you can see how it's been going. We have serviced eighty-three, uh, persons, uh, clients for this, uh, up to right now. And, uh, out of the four hundred thousand, we've used seventy-five thousand, seventy-five, four hundred and thirty-one thousand. And three hundred and thirty thousand we still have left for the, that's for the contract for L. M. C. Uh, for the local funds, uh, the forty-eight thousand, we've used six thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine, which we still have a balance of thirty-nine thousand, hundred and twenty-six. And you can see the, uh, breakdown in the, in the following page, which is the one that I fill out for the state. And then in the third page, you'll see a little bit more breakdowns on where it's been used, I think, so you all can have any.
Yes, and so we, we've never used the entirety of the eight percent, and we're not required by the state to use the entirety percent. I think over the years, what the Commissioners' Court has voted on is try to have a take care of our urgent, uh, patients, of course, and then operate some services to the rest of the public by operating a clinic there, so.
For the local, yes.
For the other commu-, uh, how do you feel the, the service?
I think this year it's getting a little better. Uh, I think we have more than enough with the eight percent to be able to cover and help out the people through the clinic.
Yeah.
And that's basically what I'm doing right now. It's very random that we use, uh, a physician outside the contract. It's only on, uh, on the, depending on the situation. But other than that, I mean, it works pretty good. I mean, it's, it's a lot of services we're hard to given. I mean, we have the, all exams, U. T.'s, M. R. Is, U. T. scans, I mean, it, it all goes through the clinic, so that goes under the eight percent, so pretty good.
But that's for the general public to, to behind that, their open.
Oh.
I mean, it's an investment in our community, what the court is doing with applying in the entire eight percent, because.
There at the clinic.
So, yes, so technically this year we would have only spent seventy-five thousand, and we were just applying only.
Only with the clinic, that's what I'm trying to, yeah, that's why I was coming up with this, uh, numbers, we all can see that how it's, it is working under the eight percent.
Yeah.
It is good to have a, a little bit on the side, just in case we need something else, but basically everything's going through their clinic, so, I mean, we've gained a lot of patients in the, they be, yes.
Well, I appreciate, so, that information, and you done, you know, really informed the court the last few, you, I would, the few years, uh, you've been being there and.
And thank you for the lighting, I mean, that's also.
Well, and, and those improvements are coming, I think, uh, the engineer will be here today, and hopefully there'll be some movement on that grant that we can really upgrade that area there, uh, including the clinic, so.
Yes, because it is, if it rains, I mean, we're getting knocked out inside the building, so there, it, nothing.
It would need a lot of help, but it's coming, it's just not fast enough.
And I believe they said that they might open on Sundays, I'm not sure when this coming year, twenty twenty-five, so, I mean, that was an additional, that would be the whole week.
That definitely be great.
Yeah, we do.
Always on Sundays.
On Sundays, yes.
Weekends, yeah, but we are open Saturdays, so they are giving all that service. I mean, we've come down to having to make appointments. There you see in the new system where they text you the link and you can do your appointments through online instead of having to call or be there, so, I mean, they've upgraded so much, they're doing an awesome job, the ladies there. Uh, I think, uh, Ms. Gonzalez also.
So, L. M. C. is providing a doctor, uh?
Yes, we have a doctor twice a month right now, and supposedly somebody else is supposed to come in.
Yes.
So then we'll have two, or it'll just be one?
It'll be two, in other words, every week. Right now it's every other weekend, it will be every week.
One every week.
I'm not sure, I don't wanna say that, but a planner might be coming in also for D. O. Ts, uh, like every Monday, uh, so that would be something else. She is retiring from here, but we're gonna pick her up in L. M. C.
She can't stay home.
And we, we want better.
Yes.
I remember Ms. Gonzalez, when I first started in two thousand and one, we had eight, about eight to twelve clients, I mean, you picked them up to about eighty-three, so you've been doing a fantastic job.
Yes, and at the end of the year, we service like two hundred and some, two hundred and some, two hundred and eighty, so.
Right now, we're eighty-three.
But I remember when I first started, we had eight.
Yes, eight or ten, ten the most, uh, it's been going, it's been going.
Work gets out.
Thank you, thank you everybody for.
She's done a tremendous job, thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's my, it's my, thank you, ma'am.
All right, Commissioners, any other communications? If not, we'll move on to public comment. This section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioners' Court on any items on the agenda, members of the public. If not, we'll move on to item number six, approval of invoices, and in our package, Commissioners, we had invoices, uh, from twelve, uh, six, twenty twenty-four through, uh, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, for a total of four hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, uh, presented by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Raza, any discussion, all of the members say aye.
Aye.
Uh, item number seven, a full of checks issued, and also we had checks issued from, uh, December sixth, twenty twenty-four through December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, for a total of four hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, uh, presented by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Raza, all of the members say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to report and presentation, uh, presentation to record in the Commissioners' Court minutes, the District Court certification of the appointment of Chief Fong Talis, County Auditor, for Zapata County Attorney pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section eighty-four point zero zero three and one five two point zero thirty-one.
Good morning, Judges, Commissioners. Uh, we had, um, a special meeting, December ninth, uh, twenty twenty-four, it was posted, actually it was seventy-two hours, but which we put out Friday, and posted it on, I think, Thursday, um, and yes, also, uh, Judge Lopez reappointed me from starting January first, uh, this coming year, to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. It just, it's for me next.
Okay.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor.
And this, uh, uh, filed at the District Court.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Moving on to the action items, we'll deliberate and consider action. Item number nine is review procedures in place uh, for the reconciliation of Zapata County checking accounts at the Zapata County Treasurer's Office and County Auditor's Office due to the discovery, discovery of fraudulent checks and the result, the resulting possible losses of taxpayer funds. And yes, Commissioners, we, uh, uh, mainly through, uh, I guess, uh, reconciling by our external auditors, uh, or consultants, discovered checks that, uh, basically have this, of course, a pooled account, same, same account number, same check number, uh, but, uh, to, may not an individual who is not a vendor of the county, and the first check was for a substantial amount of fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. And, and then, uh, following up on, uh, on some, uh, vendor not receiving a check, uh, my office, uh, Roxy, uh, discovered that, uh, another check, uh, from the same pooled account, uh, that the vendor, uh, our vendor, which was happened to be, uh, a consultant, Texas A. and M. International, doing a, a Colonia's grant study for, for the county, uh, had not received their check of nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventeen cents. Well, in this case, the check was exactly the same, uh, amount, uh, the, the same, uh, check number, uh, but, but the, uh, check was made payable to an individual who is from North, has an address in North Carolina, who is not a vendor with the county. Uh, apparently, the, our vendor never received the check, and that's why they called to inquire in my office that their check had not, uh, been, uh, received, and so I know the auditor, uh, had made contact with, uh, with the local banking institutions, and they're trying to see if we can recover, uh, those amounts that are lost, which is substantial, about seventy thousand dollars so far. Uh, and, and of course, I've met with the bank president saying, hey, well, how, how can we stop, how can we stop any further losses, uh, uh, to the county, and, uh, the Rangers have been contacted, Texas Rangers, uh, we'll see if, if other agencies, uh, will, will be, uh, uh, maybe federal agencies may be involved because it seems to be an, an interstate, uh, transaction, uh, but it's certainly concerning, I, what I wanted, and, and, talking with, with the Treasurer's Office and, and Commissioner, was how can we avoid more of these checks coming in, uh, and basically it comes down to the reconcilment of accounts, of our checking accounts. We're not doing them on a monthly basis. I, I've talked to the bank president, said, look, if, if you catch these transactions within thirty days, you have more, almost a hundred percent chance of the bank being able to recover those monies. We caught one, uh, I think, sixty days later, and the other one just happened, uh, it was also sixty days later, so they're having problems whether we can collect that fraudulent check, so I know the auditor says that, uh, we've got some external consultants now that, that have caught up, but I think this is something that the Treasurer's Department, uh, should be checking that, that account.
So, our controls do we have in place to ensure that?
So, what we've done since, um, we've closed this account, um, on recommendation from, from the bank president, so we closed this account. We've opened another one, we're reinstated, uh, Positive Pay. So what Positive Pay does, it's a software that the bank provides, the Treasurer's Office wants to do the checks, it's a software thing where it has the date, the payee, uh, the check number, uh,
Well, we need to buy reinstated.
Well.
We had it in.
We had it in place, and we just.
I guess not being utilized?
But we changed, when we changed to this new checking account a year or two ago, it just wasn't done.
I guess we either didn't inform the bank, or the bank didn't catch it.
Yeah, I guess you see, the, the way I understand, is like you're saying, the bank works directly with the county, there's, this vendor is not on, on your list, so why, why is the check only hundred?
And right now, um.
Is there a fee for this program?
No, they provided for it, it was something that, uh, Mr. Salinas was, had a bond with, with, uh, Zapata National Bank about, I was having it.
Okay.
I, I think, speaking with the staff there at the Treasurer's Office, part of the issue with that Positive Pay is that it does have the amount, it does have the date, it does have the check number, and of course, the account number, but it doesn't have the name of the vendor, it's not.
Correct.
It doesn't pick us.
So I did talk to Mr. Ranga, he said, hey, we, we need to, can you include the vendor? I mean, because in, in, in one case, everything was the same, except the vendor.
It would gotten big. So, they are dealing, so they're, they're, uh, processing companies, uh, uh, company out of Dallas called Fiserv, so they're in communication with them to get that, uh, on their roster.
In one case, uh, Positive Pay, if we had included, changed the account, now the new account, would have cost the fifty-seven thousand, because that certainly, the original check was for nine dollars and fifty cents, or something like that.
Which that check came in a month later, the actual check, the real check.
So, and, uh, I did reach out to, of course, our I. T., Mr. Raffi, I was like, is our servers being, uh, have we been hacked? He says that we actually don't even have servers for the program, uh, in, in, with us, it's iCloud.
It, it's over there with them.
So, that, maybe that, uh, program may have been hacked, uh, but it, or were these checks intercepted? Uh, that's something for law enforcement to, to follow up with, uh, so I, I have, uh, spoken, uh, to a ranger, and he will, uh, begin investigating and maybe bring in, uh, uh, more technical expertise on, on these types of, of, of crimes, uh, but in the meantime, we did file a claim with our insurance carrier. I, I don't expect to be covered, uh, and they usually don't cover.
Yesterday, uh, Mr. Ramírez contacted me that we, we, we have provisional credit, uh, for those checks. What does that mean? It means we've been credited from the, because the way the banks work, it goes to the Federal Reserve, from the Federal Reserve it goes to the other bank, so it's the bank's bank.
Yeah.
So they send us the money, so now the other company, the other bank has sixty days to come back and say, hey, you know, you're within the thirty days, or for whatever reason. If they can't recover it from these individuals, uh, one in Michigan, one in North Carolina, then they'll probably come back and, and withdraw it back. If they cancel, they're doing their due diligence, so they're trying to recover.
Hopefully, hopefully we come.
Right. In, 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 in the meantime, uh.
Because we were outside of thirty. And so why, it's so important that, uh, that we reconcile those, and it's one checking account, I mean, I, I think, uh, we should be able to reconcile that account on, on a monthly basis.
So this, uh, Positive Pay software works with the company Fiserv?
Yes, it's Fiserv.
Fiserv is a good company, we use them.
So, um, a couple of things that were, the judge and me, you know, uh, looked at and talked about, and, and with the treasurer also, the first thing, to stop the bleeding, you know, we, we closed the account, so that, that account number is not there. The other one is, uh, doing the Positive Pay. Uh, that's a, uh, one set of eyes, uh, the reconciling, that's another set of eyes, uh. So the way Positive Pay works, anytime there's checks that are not, don't comply with all four, uh, things, it goes back to them, and they have a list, and they go through them one by one to make sure that they're fine.
Is, is there a way that, that we can do a money wire instead of a check for big amounts like these?
Well.
Well, no, we wouldn't, this was, yeah, that wouldn't have helped this, because these were checks that were not our checks. Uh, i- if, if you look at the check, it looks very similar to ours, but it was printed on somebody else's phone printer. With, with all the A. B. A. number, with the bank or account number, the.
Yeah, they, they do those, I've seen them happen.
Yeah, well, it's probably just need to, we just need to be, we can't be sixty or ninety days by, uh, the bulk.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's the partner.
It would have had the Positive Pay whenever that check came in, it would have caught.
The first one. The first one, so, the other one was exactly the same amount, uh.
It was, so that one, it, it was intercepted, between here and A. and M., it was intercepted along the way and removed, because they never received it.
Yeah, or it got lost in the mail or something.
Well, someone has it, or someone tore it, because the amounts and everything is exactly the same.
Positive Pay would have caught that one, because we didn't have a vendor as part of the program.
Which were working.
That big one, the fifty-seven thousand.
So he said they could incorporate the, the vendor?
That's what they're working on.
Uh, I, uh, Zapata National, they're gonna include the vendor now.
We, we asked them, they're trying to, yeah, we asked them to, uh, that was one of the, uh, the staff, uh, from the Treasurer's Department, said, well, we really can't tell who the vendor is, which, they have the program, they have access to the program, but they don't know who the vendor is, it doesn't come out on the screen, uh, so, uh, so that, that would be, uh, it would have helped on, on one of them, uh, and the other one, of course, would, uh, uh, I mean, the Positive Pay would have helped because of the amount would have been completely different.
Correct.
So, it, it could ha- it could happen, but like a judge says, with the reconciling, as soon as we get the statement, it gives us within those twenty-eight days that the bank is obliged to, or, or, or required to return the money.
Correct, so we'll be protected.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think that's.
That'll be the.
Uh, I don't know, have, have, have you spoken with Mr. Salinas, is he, uh, accepting that responsibility to, uh, to monitor, if somebody's gotta do it?
Well, another thing, uh, and, and, the, the.
I mean, he received the check statement.
Yeah, so the, the other thing that I wanna do is, they, they break on the thirtieth, so I have access to the bank accounts, so I can look at all the checks and go through them. It won't be reconciling, but if names like these come out in a big amount, it'll, it'll stand out. So that's like the fourth set of eyes, or another set of eyes.
We've been pretty lax on, on how.
Yeah, we do need to make sure we have those controls in place, and, and it's not, I know it's.
It's just a little tedious, though.
It doesn't take, yeah.
But the way I understand it is that all you have to do is then put it in, everything is just generating by itself, so.
It's a computer generated.
There's a, the volume of, of actual checks to vendors is not overwhelming. The majority of our budgets, as we know, in S. payroll.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not some overwhelming, it's a task of, you're not talking about.
What is it, about a hundred, two hundred checks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe for twenty twenty, uh, this coming year, five, we need to, I know we talked about the procedures, about requesting P. Os and all that, maybe come up with, uh,
I, I think.
Policies and procedures, retrain people if we have to, so that we make sure that we're, we're on.
I, I think, Commissioners, something that may come of this, if we, we can't, uh, uh, you know, bring tho- those money back into our coffers is, we may, uh, I mean, you're talking about seventy thousand dollars, that's a pretty sizable amount in our budget. We may not be able to fund new positions, uh, moving forward, that, uh, that, I know we've got some that are being advertised, and, and that's about seventy thousand dollars that, uh, we hope we're not gonna have to, to fund those positions.
Yeah.
So, uh, okay, so I, basically on this, we, we, we actually, we, we both, uh, hoping late, I just wanted the court and the public to be informed of of exactly, uh, what has occurred and, and the steps we're taking to, to make sure it doesn't continue to happen again. Uh, moving on, item number ten, uh, to transfer slot number five, Department four hundred to, and that, that's my department, Commissioners, County Judge's Office, to Department five sixty, which is the Sheriff's Department, uh, as a telecommunications operator, effective, uh, January first, twenty twenty-five, with a salary set at twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, uh, remaining funds of slot number five to Department four hundred to be distributed evenly to existing, uh, telecommunications operators. So, Commissioners, I put this item on the agenda. We had a crisis last week, or earlier this week, uh, and last week, we, uh, uh, we had an emergency meeting with our, uh, nine oh one administrator from Laredo. Our, uh, nine oh one operator's system was on the verge of being shut down, uh, we didn't have sufficient operator commandings of twenty-four seven, three sixty-five service that is required of the county, uh, to be part of the system, uh, and, uh, we had six positions there, uh, in that department. They recommended at least seven, uh, so that, uh, there can be some time off, and, and not the, uh, in a position where somebody gets sick or, uh, or have to take time off, uh, those other operators will have to work overtime, or you'll have, it, it, so they are recommending seven. I've, I've, I've been here a while, I remember, we always had seven, there was a request from the Sheriff's Department, uh, to, uh, bring that number six to, and offer pay raises, uh, to some, uh, someone in his department, and that's why we, we got down to the number six. But they also, uh, mentioned that, uh, since these operators do require certification from the state, and, uh, usually, uh, the minimum salary for these individuals, and the other service areas that they have, which is Star, Jim Hogs, Zapata, and, and Web, and Web, is around the fifteen to sixteen dollar, uh, per hour range. We are close, we're on about the fourteen dollar, uh, currently range for, for the majority, some are, are, are at that level, uh, but.
But basically, they just go get a little, a little increase on their salary, right?
Yes, and, and currently, uh, of course, and I see, uh, Posi, my, my bailiff, which, uh, and I see that even coming here, I mean, I believe you're gonna be transferring to, to, uh, to your department, Sheriff.
That's correct.
Uh, so I, I won't have a need for bailiff, I, 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 I think if, if there, a need arises, the sheriff could send an officer over here, and, uh, and, uh, I'm willing to, just so we won't increase our budget, uh, I'm willing to use that, that position, uh, to.
Or, all approved.
Judge, I just have a correction, um, since the remaining ballot, uh, funds from the twenty-eight, three, forty, you wanted it to be divided amongst all the positions equally?
I don't know if, if, uh, the sheriff is here, so do you, do you want the incoming position to start a little lower than those that, that have some tenure? I mean.
I'll have to look through the budget, Judge, I've got a copy, so, and then I'll get with Nelly, or do we have to do it?
Well, I, I mean.
It would be good, because I, I'd like a supervisor at least to oversee.
Well, the supervisor is, it has.
It's with me on shift, but.
I, I have him here.
So, what I, well, what I had done, from what I had conversations with the judge about, was from the, that set salary, the twenty-eight, I divided the remaining balance into each positions and gave him a little bit of an increase, which is about a thousand, three seventy-seven.
Three seventy-seven, correct.
Yes, so, um, the lowest telecommunications officer is at twenty-nine, seven, seventeen point twenty-nine. That's, and you have.
I think it was one lucky.
Yes, and they all kind of jumped up a little bit.
Okay.
The thousand three.
And the supervisor would be at?
The supervisor.
Thirty-three, more than.
Thirty-three plus an increase.
No, she said thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-two. The supervisor would be at thirty-two, seven, thirty-three, twenty-nine.
Thirty-two, seven.
We can't be without him.
So I, I think. I basically, yeah, I basically, the, the amount that was left over, I divided into the same positions, so they each got the same increase.
That, that would be good, because the supervisor.
Well, that's what we'll do it at, as a trade in the agenda item, right?
Yes. Just, just, you gotta.
Evenly to the, all the existing.
To all seven.
All seven.
I have a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Morales, seconded by Commissioner Solis, uh, to, uh, transfer slot, uh, number four hundred from the Judge's Office to slot number, uh, Department five. Department five sixty as a telecommunications operator, any other discussion, although in favor say aye?
Aye, Judge, maybe we can also.
And this will be effective January first, so.
We we can probably also mention it to, I guess, the White House, for the SB twenty-two, I I feel that they should be included with with the first sponsors.
Well, there there is, it's just, we have a high demand, we we have a considerable amount of officers, and we have a set amount that they. So the sheriff could could, uh, determine that and say, uh, but we didn't have enough here for the Jagers to get them up to the required minimum forty. So that's one of the conversations we need to have with with our state rep and say.
I I actually spoke with him, Judge, this past week, so I know he's gonna work on it, uh.
Because we are short, Commissioners, that should be included.
Because they didn't figure out, you know, the population, uh, you know, and and the department size of each county, so they're aware of that and they're gonna try to fix it.
I spoke with him in some months with my training, I I had him go over there to to meet with me and we were talking about the due, so we're gonna. Get in close to communication about that.
I think mo- most counties, our size, don't have the 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 size of the department that the sheriff has, so that's where the, uh, maybe they could be at some exceptions to.
Or the pay, you know, we were, I I think we had retention officers very underpaid compared to what the what they recommended for.
Yeah, forty thousand, yeah.
So it was a big gap, you know, and the amount of officers as well, so that that's what made it up.
I mean, all our deputies are at the minimum that they say, and, uh, but our our detention officers are lower and of course our nine-one-one operator.
They're they're working on it, so hopefully.
That that'd be great.
We're good, very good with that, we got everybody voted right there, I'm sorry. Item number eleven is to approve a memorandum of understanding MOU between Workforce Solutions for South Texas. And Zapata County Community Centers, uh, for the placement of a workstation at the Zapata County Community Center. So, uh, Ms. Lava got informed me that, uh, so we we offer a space, uh, office space for workforce solutions, uh. They do have a virtual training, uh, booth, but it's inside their office. Uh, what what they're saying is, uh, once every now and then when their, uh, employee is not there. It's really no good, because they they can't have access to it, they would like to place that virtual station outside, uh, on the, in the hallway. And that's why, but since it's not part of the original MOU of of the exact parameters of of the office. They're coming back to the court and saying, will you give us permission to place the actual booth in the hallway? So if if our office is closed that day, uh, you know, uh, any resident looking, uh, for job opportunities can still access the.
Has he got a council bond already?
Yes, he he has, I think he wanted to change there was a typo. Yes, uh, about the the typo.
Something about being webbed to Zapata County.
Yes, it's still in the agreement, there's some, uh. So we'll do those changes, we'll do those changes here.
Judge, I make a motion to approve the memorandum, uh, the memorandum of understanding, uh, this change, uh, language that has, uh, has been.
From where it's Zapata County. And I did, uh, uh, verify with, uh, the executive director, Mr. Oviedo Pravino. That in no way will, uh, the, uh, workforce solutions be eliminating their current position staff. I said, I I don't wanna, uh, agree to installing a virtual station and and then, that's all we have. Uh, so he says, no, we're committed to having the staff there in 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 the office, it's just the time that she may not be there, uh, we can have it outside. Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Morales, although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twelve is to consider and approve a code from Johnson Controls to repair fire pump deficiencies at Zapata County Courthouse. Welcome to their inspection, uh, our our fire pump needs some, basically, gaskets and. There there's a description of of their findings, uh, that I I think we have no other choice but to approve, so it it's for, uh.
Eight thousand, two seventy-eight, nineteen?
Yes, correct. I mean, there's a second one for six thousand, Judge?
I think it's the same.
It it's a breakdown.
Yeah, it's a breakdown, it's, uh.
And includes parts and labor, uh, parts is six thousand, six hundred and ten or nineteen cents, and and labor is one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and this is for, uh. That, uh, will provide material to repack fire pump to include the following packing, bolts, a, uh, case gasket, removing pump head covering. And then reinstalling, uh, the pump in term condition, uh, the pump is unknown. Additional parts may be required to achieve proper operation, so currently, uh, it's not working properly, so we definitely need to.
So I just have a motion to approve, uh, payment, uh, eight thousand, two hundred, seventy with nineteen cents, to Johnson Controls.
To repair that fire pump. Motion by Commissioner Solis, uh, to approve, uh, estimate, uh, for the repair of the fire pump, and seconded by Commissioner Morales, uh, to Johnson Controls and, uh.
So this, this would be an estimate, Judge, or would it be the final?
It was an estimate.
Okay, so then it'll be, the motion would be to.
To approve the quote.
Yeah, the quote.
Yeah, about six, eight thousand, that's, yeah, put the estimate, uh, and, although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Item number thirteen, and this will become from my department.
Yeah, depending on the.
To consider and approve both from parrot, uh, to repair the the muster's unit for the aid track at Zapata County Courthouse. Uh, Commissioner, that was a few months ago, uh, the compressor, which stabilizes the pressure inside our courthouse. Uh, from whatever positive, the negative, we want to, positive pressure, uh, has four compressors. Uh, three are working properly, one is not, uh, so there, this is to repair and replace one of the four compressors that that unit has. It's the one on top of the roof, it's not part of the chiller, it's the the muster unit on top of the courthouse, uh, roof.
Is that for eighty-six seventy, Judge?
And the amount, they did include the amount.
Eighty-six seventeen with thirty-seven?
Yes.
And this will be coming out of where?
Number department also.
Motion to approve, uh, eighty-six seventeen with thirty-seven cents?
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Solis.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Gasa, although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Yeah, these are yearly events. Item number fourteen is to approve a facility lease agreement for the Sunny National Civic Tenants.
On that one, uh, we should be just, uh, ran it out, but, uh, we wanna start doing it, but making sure that we have an agreement in place.
With the rules and regulations.
We're we're not making sure that they, uh, they don't involve the capacity, it just talks about the capacity. Making sure that they see the, they they visit the the facility before they sign it, and then after they're done, we go in and inspect to make sure that everything's good.
No damages or anything.
It's released, it's it's just something to have in mind.
Sure, has, uh, Mr. Figueroa on that one?
Mr. Figueroa, I haven't checked with Mr. Figueroa.
I'm I'm making a motion to approve pending, uh, uh.
Review.
The.
Legal.
Legal counsel, uh, review, I think we.
You know, it's, it's just a little, because we've never had any.
Right, right, which is good, but you know, a legal, a motion to spending legal, legal, uh, authorization.
And I want to thank, uh, Ms. Gasa, she says she's gonna be the one and talk to, helping us out, starting genuinely.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Gasa to approve the agreement pending.
Legal.
I guess, yeah, or, uh, adjourned.
I'll send it to Mr. Figueroa.
Okay, although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen is to approve the Zapata County Airport currency car use agreement, and, uh, so I think.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, yes, Judge, I, Nico did approve it, he went through it and everything, he said everything's good, and it'll help a lot, because I know a lot of companies have been trying to. You know, uh, lease or rent a vehicle, not leave, the rental vehicle, and it's hard for people or companies from Laredo to come in, and now with this. We should get more air traffic, because they're constantly calling for.
So we'll have this for, available for anybody flying in that they can rent a.
And they can only use it within forty miles.
It's gotta, it says pilot, so it's it's just limited to the to the pilot?
Yeah, the pilots are the ones that usually, uh, said, but if if anybody else uses it, it's gotta be, it's all on there on the.
And which vehicle was this team?
Uh, two thousand and eight.
The expiration that was given to us from, uh.
Make a motion to approve the currency car use agreement?
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Gasa, although in favor say aye?
Aye. Would this be required to have like, uh, an insurance?
Yes, yes, it's all on the.
Thank you.
It's all on the, on the agreement.
Item number sixteen is to review the status of the booster station project. Once again, you got the voucher.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Judge.
Morning.
Morning.
Guerra, who premieres for the record.
Monday, good to see you again.
Merry, Merry Christmas.
Yes, yes, yes. Around the corner.
Um, just, uh, so for this item, I'm gonna present, uh, a change order for, uh, from the contractor, uh. He's, uh, he's being delayed on some tanks, he should be getting them by early January, so, uh, but we do need to, uh, ask for an extension. As required, uh, as recommended by the grant writer, and, uh, so basically, uh, it's gonna be for for ninety days. And it's gonna be, uh, the change order contract that will push it to March the twenty-fifth.
Yes, we we did discuss that, Commissioner, with the engineer, Monsalas, and the grant writer from Grant Works. And given that we already are not able to, uh, to apply for any grants until, uh, with TDA, until this grant is is completed. Uh, it won't hurt, uh, the county any by extending it, requesting a an extension, uh, until March, and this will allow that project to, you know. The contractors I know has had trouble bringing in some of the equipment, so.
Just, uh, everything's ready, or it's just waiting for those?
That is correct.
Yes, so then that he, it won't, it won't hurt the county in any way.
No additional fee or anything?
No, 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 zero, zero additional fee. And, uh, so that will be for that, and then the the invoice is for just a, uh, we're we're pulling a, uh, just a little bit of twenty-six thousand and thirty dollars. For this, for this, this part of the, of the, this will be in payment number seven, so those two things for for the, for this item.
And this, the motion would be for X star, Commissioner.
Motion to approve payment twenty-six thirty to X star.
Right, we we make it after the X star bond?
Yeah, that is correct, yes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by, uh, Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Gasa to approve payment number seven, uh, on the booster station, uh, which is Frank's Construction, right? Is is a contractor, uh, but, uh, the payments are are funneled through, uh, through X star banking company. So, got a motion second, although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seventeen is to review status on the Sunny National Water Park project.
Uh, yes, Judge, uh, for that one, they're moving along pretty well, um, uh, they should be done before January thirty-first. And for that one, I bring an invoice for Muflon, and that will be in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seven with fifty cents.
And that's would be a hundred percent completion?
No.
No, this would be.
About sixty, maybe?
About sixty, yeah.
But they're 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 moving along, their project is, uh, is moving along.
Payment, what payment is it?
It's about fifty-three, fifty-three percent.
Fifty-three, okay.
Payment number, sir?
Payment number eight.
Motion to approve payment number eight of ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seven, fifty cents.
Yes, yes.
Motion by Commissioner Morales, seconded by Commissioner Solis, and this again, uh, is for Muflon, uh, going through X star. Bonding company.
Yes.
Okay.
A motion second, although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item, uh, number eighteen, uh, well, you're up with, let's do, uh, well, yeah, the two, well, Mr. Monsalas is.
We'll skip eighteen.
A payment of five thousand, two hundred and fifty to Zapata Quick Care Incorporated for work done at Zapata Medical Center. I believe there's, uh, a change to twenty thousand, I mean.
Twenty, two thousand, two hundred, right? There was an increase of two hundred.
But that was not for for Manuel.
That's still be from Monsalas. I have a motion of make, uh, to approve payment of twenty-five hundred, yeah?
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Morales to approve twenty-five hundred for AC work done at the Plaza Medical Center, although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
There was an increase of two hundred and fifty to line, is there?
Ele- electrical water.
Electrical water to line.
All right, uh, nineteen to review status, take any action on the Sunny National Project?
Uh, Judge, items number nineteen and tw- and number nineteen and twenty-one, those are, those are repeats.
Okay, they're repeats, okay.
Yeah, so it would be.
No more action, nineteen and twenty-one, no action, Commissioner. Item number twenty is to review status and take any action necessary on CFC twenty-one, that is zero, one, nine, one, uh, the drainage project.
For the drainage project, Judge, uh, we're just pending on Muflon's, uh, bond documents to be able to execute the contract and give the notice to proceed.
Okay.
And then we do bring an invoice for for engineering services, for a hundred percent design complete and, uh, and beta process. And that would be, uh, invoice number two, seven, three, eighty-nine, for an amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five.
So, Premier Engineering, okay.
A motion to approve, uh, payment of fourteen thousand, eight seventy-five to Premier Engineer, for a hundred percent completion.
Mr. Guerra, on that, on, uh, I know the county, we committed to do some, some of the work on that drainage project. When can we, uh, begin the actual clearing of of some of that challenge?
I think of that, uh, as my conversation with with Manuel, I think we we can already start mobilizing, and so getting it ready.
So, it might be something, Commissioners, that I think, well, that project will certainly help, uh, precinct four and precinct one, uh. But the the clearing will be done on precinct one, uh, you know, uh, hydro sixteen, the air, and that.
Right after that, that bridge.
But but we can mobilize, uh, certainly bring our dozer from, uh.
And if you need more manpower.
Well, I already have, my my area is already like cleared out.
Yeah, you're cleared, yeah, so this would be the south, southern section, but I guess the.
Yeah.
The engineers will mark the areas.
Yeah, yeah, we can go ahead and and stake it out.
Stake it out, I think, I think my side is already stake staked out, I think Manuel had already, and I think I have some T-poles already there.
Yeah, so we can get ahead of the project, do do what we, uh, committed to do, and and then with, that way Muflon, where would the engineer come, I mean.
Yeah, whenever I heard about this project, I had wish to work about and and T and measure my side, so I can start clearing it out, so it's already.
Really, okay.
So I have some T-pole there, I think they.
All right, well, uh, probably be the next year, I guess.
The only thing, we wanted to see if we could, uh, talk to Mister, uh, Paul of Mufflers, to see if he can either.
On the north end?
Yeah, on the, on this side, so it'll be a straighter path, because I know his property comes out like almost close to the to the bridge. So I don't know, Mr. Monsalas said he he was gonna talk to him to see if he can either donate it or or maybe purchase.
I I think with the amount of money, we're not gonna concrete the north, northern side of.
There there there's a section that we're not gonna concrete.
Yeah, I think it's it's at the north side on on your side.
Okay.
So we, the fund, the concrete section will be on the south.
On on the south.
Since the water smoothes both slowly, I mean, uh, freely there.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, uh, and given the amount of monies that we have to work with, so we're we're just gonna add concrete on the southern side.
Okay.
That is correct, yes.
All right, concrete.
So I think your side is great, it's it's good to go.
I know it does like, when the water flows, you still get the big holes in it, but.
Yeah, and and I, and I think that's part of the plan, they're gonna be, they're gonna fill those holes and.
All right.
That can be a great project.
Yeah, and then we've got, uh, so there we, we we're okay there, right, the drainage?
No.
We moved everything?
No.
Make a motion of make, uh, to approve payment of fourteen, eight seventy-five, invoice number twenty-seven, three nine.
And seconded by Commissioner Morales, although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and now we've got item number twenty-two is to award a bid for the USDA raw water, uh, tractor, uh, purchase, so. Commissioner, we we awarded the entire project, uh, to Muflon, uh, construction, and and it included in in the, in the actual bid. The purchase of equipment, uh, we were able, uh, working with, uh, USDA, uh, to remove, uh, that, uh, that, I guess, item. And and allow the county to make that purchase and actually save some money from the original bid, the contractor was agreed to 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 let us do that. We went out for bids, I guess, a couple of weeks ago on on proposals for which which type of equipment, and I guess. I was premiering to tell us, okay, do you want a loading, uh, truckhoe and, uh, a regular truckhoe, and.
Yes.
We have bids on both, or just one?
For this one, actually, uh, the the the, and I was gonna ask for a, to table it, because the bid is actually today at two P M.
Oh.
So, so, uh.
So we'll come back next, next year.
Yeah, we'll come back next year, but also, they gave us the option that, uh, depending on the bids, um, USDA said that we we are able to collect, uh, yeah. Proposals directly, so it's not necessary to get bid, so if we're not successful in this, uh.
You can go out to other areas.
We can just go out and and get personal, uh, or individual bids from the, from the individual, uh, companies, and then we can just select the the.
Hello, it's better.
All right, we'll get to all of the.
So table, no action?
Table, yeah.
Yeah.
Motion table by Commissioner Gasa, seconded by Commissioner Solis, although in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion table, okay, we'll wait for it, happy year, very good.
Happy Christmas, happy new year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got some streetlights, Commissioners? And we've got some streetlights, Commissioners, forty one, twenty five, Cantadas, Lanes, Sunny Nation, Texas.
Seconded.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Gasa, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
A motion to adjourn, happy holidays.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner, uh, Solis, seconded by Commissioner Gasa, yeah, uh, we won't see each other very quickly, very long. Twenty five.
Twenty twenty five.